Good evening. Bob Maderos for Nowon Drive, Ledger, New Jersey. I have several questions, so I would appreciate a little bit more than three minutes, about four minutes. As a resident of 30 years of Roxbury, New Jersey, it's been a busy week. First of all, a busy two weeks since the last. We had a meeting of the Ryton Heck Waters Association at the Roxbury Environmental Group, and he presented a presentation to prove that the water in Drake's Pond is contaminated and it's caused by the Fenmore landfill. So as a concerned resident of Roxbury, New Jersey, on request to the town council to have Bill Kimball, Director of the Policies and Science, a spokesperson for the Ryton Heck Waters Association, speak at the town council so that it's down on record that an established organization has determined that the Fenmore landfill is contaminating the water. Second, with this knowledge and with the knowledge that's been released by the DEP in these past two weeks stating that the water is contaminated and that they had knowledge of this prior to the Benardi landfill being brought in, I'm requesting construction of a concrete collection pond at the bottom of the basin to collect the contaminated water and have it trucked out per EPA specifications so that it will slow down the contamination of the leakage until we could determine what is the best solution to take. Third, core drilling samples in various locations on the landfill to establish chemical testing of the water conditions to develop a resolution to stop the contamination. We have to know what to test for before we know how to cure it. Therefore, the Ryton Heck Waters will require soil samples, which best is resolved by core sampling. And third, let's see, core samples, drilling, construction, concrete. My last question, request is that we bring in the EPA, that we send a formal request to the EPA to come and investigate the DPAs, how did I put it? Let's see. I'll say it. Their failure to properly close this landfill. The landfill has not been with no means closed by any engineering standard whatsoever. I have proved time and time again that the water has been contaminated. It's been released by the DEP that it's contaminated. We don't know exactly what the contaminated material are, so we have to dig for it and make some further testing. We need to get down to this problem, and I am requesting those four items through the town council, especially to bring in the EPA and investigate the handling of the closure process from the DEP.
I'll take all those under consideration. A lot of these I know have taken place where it has been before the Environmental Commission. As you know, we've been to EPA before, but it's new ground, so we'll take a look at all these issues.
Can I get an answer if you are willing to host the Ryton Heck Waters Association?
I don't have the information right now, so if it weren't, yes, we have no problem. But like I said, I know the--
I have his card.
I know, yeah, we have contact.
You have the contact. What information are you requesting or needing?
Oh, we just want to hear from the Environmental Commission, who has our expertise on the subject, get their feedback on the--
Presentation?
--report that was brought out by the Raritan Heck Waters Association.
So you want to--
That's out of Kimball, right?
Kimball, right. You want to go to the Roxbury Environmental Group and find out what their status is on this? You lost me.
I haven't seen the report, Bob, so it's not fair for me to make a comment. If it's something that's warranted, we will. I know a lot of the public, or some of the public, was at the Environmental Commission meeting--
Correct.
Was it a week ago, boy?
A week and a half.
Week and a half ago. I was there, and we presented it, and apparently it's something essential that the residents should have on record with the town is taking place, so that it's public record, not just a Facebook video.
The report is a matter of public record because it has been submitted, but I understand what you're saying. We'll still take a look at it.
Can I expect a response by next meeting?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public wish to be heard? Please raise your hand. Yes, sir.
Bob Schultz, Randolph, New Jersey. Marty, you were at the meeting at the Environmental Commission. You had said that you were going to ask the council to have Bill Kidler come in. Is that still the plan?
I haven't given a report to anybody yet. We're not even at that point on the agenda.
Is that happening tonight? You're going to give the report?
I'm going to give a report on it.
Excellent. Is there any update with Fenmore from the township?
As of this weekend, is there anything?
Oh, you're right. I think there were some questions that Mr. Hall had asked, or that Mr. Hall put together at the last meeting, so I think I can go over those because we have some answers to those. One of the answers, why is the larger oxidizer necessary? And again, this information was posted in the last update from the NJDP, and again in an email from Mr. Putnam to Bill Morocco as well. Why is the implementation of the new oxidizer delayed? As per the NJDP last update, work was to be done in February. They have brought the oxidizer in.
It has to be posted on the website.
It is posted on the website. I understand that the unit would be delivered, which it was delivered, installation should occur in March. I've requested the NJDP to provide an updated fact sheet for posting on our website on three separate occasions since the last meeting. Follow-up from the ATSDR. The team is still drafting, this is from Mrs. Dr. Dyken, the team is still drafting the report. Once we complete the draft, it will start our internal clearance process, which can be lengthy, several months or more, but sometimes can go more quickly. Discussing water tests at the basins. The NJTEP has indicated that they're going to be doing some groundwater monitoring tests on their wells in March, weather permitting. And is the sponge technology to be used in the future? A passive system is planned. The timing will obviously be determined by the NJDP. It was in their closure report from a while back. And again, I've asked for an update from the NJDP directly on these. Post the stack test results. We actually have the continuing monitor results, which has been posted. We've asked for those on a regular basis. When will the firmware fixes be positioned on all the monitors? They've been done. So according to Bruce Groves, he's gone out and done the repairs and the replacements as needed. And residents are still smelling H2S. Let's see. I asked for a follow-up on that as well from Ed Putnam. Give me just a second here.
We've had two issues over the last month or so where--
It's just been a little, it's an easy one here.
Outside.
They received nine complaints on the 11th of February, which is the date that they left the valve open as they were doing some repairs, and they've received two complaints since then. The last one was on the 22nd from the residents. And I think that was all of the questions that, I believe Bob asked the majority of those from the last meeting February and February.
Not many of those were posted or have they posted, so.
Yeah, in various forms or not. We've been getting a lot of responses from the DEP lately, so.
I know one of the questions I had was, was the township going to do any air or water or soil testing? Because that hadn't been done since 2013, which I still haven't found anything on the website that's been there since.
June of 2014, right, Chris?
I believe it was April, but maybe it was posted in June, yeah. April 2014 was our last--
Posted, Bob.
--was tested.
Go back to 13, Bob.
And again--
The township did it, or the DEP?
No, the township posted. We posted, Councilmember Schmidt was able to find those from April 2014.
You brought that up last few weeks that wasn't there.
Right.
It was there, Bob.
So June of 2014 is on the websites, under the testing portion of it?
But in addition to that is that the DEP is indicating they're doing the monitoring well testing sometime in March, weather permitting. And I always, I've said many times before, I'm always leery of presenting information from the DEP. So this is the best information. This is why I always ask for an update on a regular basis. But they're saying they're doing the monitoring well testing. Our health department is prepared to go out and do sediment and testing again on the streams, which we've been doing fairly regularly, and we're prepared to do that as well, too, weather permitting, yeah.
And any air testing? Because we still think there's gases coming out of there, I mean, of some type, and the fact that, for instance, Shannon's monitor just last night or the night before was reading very steady, and she's, you know, saying it's in our house indicates to me that something else is going on, and there's been talk of other gases and ethylmethyl carp. I don't remember what it's called, but--
Yeah, that came up a year or two ago as well.
Right, but the DEP-- Right, and the DEP never tested for it. So they, and they admitted, I've seen an email, that they said, "We never tested for it because the scrubbers should take care of it." Well, we all know that that's not 100%. So is there any plans to do any air testing?
Well, if I remember correctly, it's because it's similar to, but less toxic than SO2, correct?
I think there's some information coming out, maybe directly to the residents that we can review and post on our website.
It is toxic. What's more toxic, from my standpoint, I don't care.
We're not trying to rationalize whether something's more toxic than another. I think it fell within the same umbrella, but we'll check on that. I think Chris just said he has--
It's detectable at lower levels, if I'm not mistaken, than hydrogen sulfide, so.
Also, one of them does dissipate when it comes out of the stack.
Right, and then also the ethyl, whatever it is.
It's methyl or cap to the other, it doesn't--
Right, and it's water soluble, which means it'll sit in the water as well.
Water soluble, that's right.
Right.
Yeah, I think we said some more information we can post on the website.
I think, I think Bob said something out recently, so.
Correct, yeah, we can post on the website.
Thanks, Bob. Anybody else in the public wish to be heard? Please raise your hand. Yes, sir.
Anthony Fiori, 75 Chase. Questions for Mr. Ratz. How are we doing on salts for the roads?
I actually have a report later on in the meeting, should you want to wait--
Mr. Ratz, potholes. Are the DPW crews, I know it's been a constant challenge this winter, is that something that Mr. Blenheim's crew are doing?
Absolutely. Between plowing and laying out salt, they are going out, and you have some of our fine DPW people here tonight, so between the salting, they are going out and plowing, they are putting in the cold patch on potholes. Cold patch, as we all know, is not the most reliable substance. They put it down properly, but in the next thaw, you'll probably see some popping as well, too.
Okay, so it's short for--
That's putting the holes quasi-fixed. And just since you asked a question--
Sir.
A lot of people are indicating that they're getting undulations in the roads. Those are frost heaves. We haven't had any frost heaves like this in a long time, so if you're running down some certain roads and you're thinking you're going over speed humps, those are frost heaves. When you've got four feet of freeze underneath the surface, when it thaws, those will go back down.
Which is creating a lot of--
I think we're seeing them on frontage road where they just--
See them all over the place.
Last year, what a shame.
They'll go down, they'll go down when it thaws.
All right, cool.
If yours is New England, talk about that.
Thanks, Jim.
Yeah, wish you luck. Anybody else in the public wish to be heard? Please raise your hand. Yes, sir.
Carl Panetta, resident of Roxbury. I have a question first, is who designed and characterized both of those scrubbers or whatever you guys want to call it today? Who is the person who did that, or company that designed that product?
It's an existing product line.
I don't know. I know Handex, I know Handex is the operator, Carl, but I can ask that question.
The operator is one thing. What I'd like to know is who the manufacturer is, because when we find out who the manufacturer is, then we can go back to them and say, because you guys don't tell us, don't know, and some of the information we've been getting is not complete, so they should be able to tell us when the hydrogen sulfide is being scrubbed and goes out, what comes out. That's part of when you design something and you put it into production and you have people buy it. And I'm surprised, no, not surprised, that the DEP hasn't asked those questions. So that's real important. In fact, the new one, even more important. I mean, how can you put something in that doesn't have any, I mean, you go buy a car, you get a manual, it talks all about the lights, the car, how the, the system for navigation works. You just can't just write something up there unless you know, and I think that's important. And that leads me into my second question. I started to do some work on looking at the monitors. And those monitors are made by Arizona Instruments. And they're a Jerome-type, they're a Jerome-type of instrument. And what it is, is the main box that's there is a 651, and the one that's inside is the one that does most of the work. That's a handheld. And it says it right in the manual, it's a handheld. That's 631. 651 is the entire box. Well, what I'm concerned about is, I went around, actually, I got a picture of one of the, one of the sites. This one, I don't know where that's located, but that's a site.
That's the Emin Road, Carl.
Yeah, that's Emin Road.
So--
No, that's right over there.
So if you look, if you look at that picture, first of all, I'm not sure where that's located in respect to where the Fenmore dump is. That's one thing. The other thing is, if you look at the antenna or the monitoring piece, that's being blocked. In this manual, it says it should go high because it's a 360-degree thing. That's the other thing. The other thing is, these guys that keep telling us that it's got to be grounded correctly and they're on extension cords, look at that picture based on what's in this manual. I don't know if they're grounded right. I don't think they are. And the one up in, I don't know where it is, over here by the hill where I live, at the lake, that's polluted over there. That's where the old swimming hole used to be?
Drake's Pond.
Yeah, look at that one. One, there's no antenna like it shows on there. There's a little one that's for sending the data back and forth, and there's no grounding on it. So that's the way they're doing things, and the manual says to do just the opposite. And I'm not making this up. It's in the manual that I picked it up, and it tells how to do it. And two's a trend. They did it wrong on two places. So that, to me, says right away, there's a problem. And the other thing it says here that's really important, it says, let me see if I can find it. Oh, I think this is it. Potential interferences. It says that there are a lot of other compounds that are present that can foul up these meters and you get wrong results. So we don't know what those are either. So I'm not so sure how good these results are. It might be a whole lot worse. I mean, my last question is, the, I appreciate you sending me that message and getting that to me from the DEP. But my concern is, they're saying, oh, they haven't gotten any complaints, which is wrong. There are lots of complaints. We also haven't gotten a lot of, the results of this SO2 is very low. That's what they said. Well, let's try to go back in time a little bit. What do we all expect the SO2 levels to be when there is no dump, when the air is fresh and clean? What do we expect those to be? I think they should be zero. Now, maybe that's unreasonable, but I think they should be zero. But we're seeing all the time, 10, 15, 10, 10, 8. Some don't see anything. So what's the long-term solution? Should be zero. Should be no hydrogen sulfide coming out of that up there. And then I asked them another question. We got, it sounds like we got another cover, which is the snow. Where's the snow, where's the SO2 coming out? He kind of told me, but it's not a significant answer. So what are we going to do about all these things? I mean, I don't know if you guys looked at this manual, but I can give it to you if you want. But I'm going to do what you say all the time, Mr. Ratz. It's on site, you can pick it right up, and you've got all the information you need on their website. So, I mean, how can you ignore, or the DEP ignore this stuff? I think that you guys, you guys, because, and this goes to something you had said one time, or I heard, you don't want too many people contacting the DEP. You only want one source of contact, which I think is Mr. Ratz, right?
We never said that.
Yes, you guys did. You're too many people--
We encouraged you to contact DEP.
We want you to contact DEP.
No, 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 you guys said, because there's too many people contacting, too many people, that you want--
DEP may have said that.
Yeah, we did. In fact, we took objection to that.
We don't want to be the mouthpiece for DEP.
Well, that's fine, and we can do that, but I personally think, with all the information I just have here, they're not going to listen to somebody like me. Maybe they will, maybe they will, Bill Morocco they will listen to, they'll listen to Bob Maderos, maybe they'll listen to Bob Schultz, I don't know. But coming from you guys, our town council, speaking for us, really needs to go and talk to them based on, this is not crap, I'm telling you what's here, and they're doing it wrong. So I'd like you guys to address all that stuff, just like Bob said about what he needs. Done. And then one other thing, thank you very much for having the Health Department, the county. But, you know, to be honest with you, Mr. Ratz, what does the nurse do for me? I don't need the nurse. We need the department head to call and talk to us about the situation, not the nurse.
Sure, I can do that. Thank you.
You do what you need to do, but--
Yeah.
Now, I can leave this stuff for you, because I'm going to go back and check to see if you guys go up there and do anything with any of those meters.
You can hold on to it.
We got a problem.
Anybody else in the public wish to be heard? Please raise your hand.
In light of what Bob has said tonight with the contamination that's proven from the landfill, I read something else online that said that there was proven contamination before this whole episode even started. Do any of you aware of that? It was in that Wolf Notes.
There's been ongoing monitoring of Drake's Brook and the pond by the Environmental Commission for many years.
I read an article, maybe I misunderstood, but it seemed like it was saying that there was a level of contamination at Fenmore before this, so that this never should have been considered as a site for a solar farm.
What was the publication again?
I think it was Wolf Notes. I read it online.
We can look into that.
You haven't read it?
I don't have it, no.
Because it says, you know, the whole point of it, unless I misunderstood, was that this never should have even been considered as a site proper for the solar farm. In light of that, I was wondering if you would give a commitment to ask for an investigation by the Department of Justice into this whole, because this is a whole huge mess now, and it seems like it was, you know, from the start, it just never should have happened. And so if you--
Well, we did not support that from the beginning. I have Wolf Notes opinions. I'm not going to say whether I agree or disagree with them since I haven't read it, but I haven't always agreed with all of his opinions. But I think it's really to look at--
I believe we have Jax to back it up, so if you, yeah, if you read the, if you do read it and if you find it to be valid, would you be willing to contact the Department of Justice to investigate why this whole thing ever began? And maybe, Mr. Bucko, you can be the one to answer that question. That's up to the management.
Yeah, it's been, it's been down that road. You keep asking for it. We don't mind if there's an investigation done. We've never objected to an investigation being done. There's been calls for an investigation be done from state senators who have not, whether they made requests that it fell on deaf ears, or if it, or for whatever reason it didn't, went away, I have no idea.
Well, I would request to go to the federal level, to the Federal Department of Justice, because it is falling on deaf ears in the state, and while I wouldn't, you know, I would rather, I mean, you're saying you wouldn't object to one, but wouldn't you welcome one? Because this is our, your town, you're the mayor. This is your, you know, this is a catastrophe in your town.
100%.
And so how--
And we backed it that way from day one, long before you started getting involved. So we've been, we've been concerned about this from the very beginning--
But I would love to see--
--and taking positions and trying to prevent this from happening. And then there was somebody that came in, you know, history lesson, Fred likes to give the history lesson on what happened here. This isn't, you know, can't just start here. There's a lot of things that took place prior to that. Some involved DEP, and some involved a developer that did things not according to what he was supposed to do, and a lot of different things, so--
Wait, if the start goes correct--
There's a lot of litigation that both this township is in, as well as the DEP with the SEP, the person that was bringing the materials in to the site.
My point is that a lot of this is being done in the dark, and I think that you need to shine a light on it, and you need an open and thorough investigation so that people can understand exactly what happened. If there is criminal wrongdoing, that should be, that should be exposed. And if this was, I mean, already Benardi is a convicted felon, so he shouldn't have even had the contract to do this. So I think that, I would hope that our elected officials would, rather than say you wouldn't object to it, that you would forcefully fight for it and be our representatives.
What we've been forcefully fighting for for the last three years is trying to make this--
Have you asked for federal involvement?
May I finish? I was allowing you to finish.
Yeah.
What we fought for from day one is trying to make sure that our residents and their health and well-being is at the top of the list, finding out necessarily who it was. While that is important, and we will probably get to that at some point in time, and I think the litigation brings some of that out, but I, right now, our concern has always been, what's going to happen with the site? What can we get them to do? How can we make sure our residents are safe? Whether it was trying to keep trucks off the road, or, you know, gases out of people's houses and homes, you know, children outside, that's all we've done. A lot of it, we've done internally, a lot of what we've done is reactions to what you brought to our attention from day one.
Well, in relation to that, then, I would ask that you would at least contact the EPA, as Bob had suggested, because you need, I believe the DEP is not acting in our best interest.
Which we have. We have contacted them on multiple occasions, and they defer to the DEP each and every time.
Well, just now, now we're experiencing the water contamination. I think--
That's why I said--
I think that it's like a, it's a fluid situation, and so when new information becomes available, I think it has to be, again, brought to the attention and they have to be--
And that's why I said Mr. Maderos will look at that, and then it's in the ground. We'll take a look at that.
Okay. And then just, Mr. Bucko, do you have any environmental law expertise?
Yes, I work on, I actually worked on the Ringley landfill that was closed in Porcito many years ago.
So do--
And I worked on the Combeville litigation.
And that's now--
Close.
I just read that that, and it's also now contaminating the groundwater, I just read.
There's been an report that there's been a groundwater contamination up there. You are correct.
Right. Okay.
Thank you. Would anybody else in the public wish to be heard? Please raise your hand. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, front of issue, Wood Suckasana, New York. If you were not backing up the dump being touched back a few years ago-- If you were not backing up the dump being touched back a few years ago, are you, do you still hold that position that you think that this is wrong, what's been going on? That you're not backing up everything that's going on up there?
What, what do you mean backing up?
You just said that you, you, you all were against, well, you know, when they wanted to come in and do something with the dump.
This was a plan, this was a plan that was not put together with the approval of, or initially even knowledge of, anyone on this council. Period.
You're on the Highlands, aren't you? You knew about it.
No, I didn't, actually, I'd just gotten on, Eileen Swan did not mention it to me, because it is a conflict of interest. And she's the one that approved it, unlike a lot of the things people write. Facts are facts, they're, they're, they're transparent.
Back these, you're on the committee.
So, with everything that's going on now, would you say, you're, you're saying you're more on the side of the community as opposed to on the side of pro what the DEP is doing?
In its entirety, yes.
Okay, then I respectfully request backing up Bob Maderos, that you have the Raritan Headwaters in here, whether you need to review reports or whatnot. I think if you wanna back up the public, like you say, you've done things that the public has requested that we've brought to your, to light to you, that I think, no matter what any reports say or not, I think you should have the Raritan Headwaters in here, so you can all be fully aware from them who did the actual testing, and have knowledge in that area, and can report to you on that for our behalf, and her behalf also, you live there also.
Yep.
Okay, and also, in regards to the severe potholes, maybe for potholes that are dangerous, cause I know sometimes people try and swerve to miss them, so they don't, will always tire...
You see them, tell us.
Can I just finish, please? If there's any that you, anyone sees, the DE, the Department of Public Works see, that maybe can't get taken care of right away, maybe do what they do sometimes when there's bicycle events, and put some spray paint around them to warn people ahead of time, so they're not swerving last minute and then scaring the person coming at them in the next lane. Or actually hitting something that they could have avoided and still stayed in their lane and not have an accident because of them blowing a tire out and door denting a rim.
We'll take that into consideration.
Thank you.
But please, let us know right away if you see potholes, we don't always see them right away.
And you can go online, we have a service request area, I think some of you have used it, and you can go right on that service request, it'll go the very next day to the Public Works Department.
I have called, I have called in, I didn't know there was something online, but I have called in prior, a couple of years ago, when there was actually this sunken dip in the road that you really can't see. My husband rides a motorcycle, and it was at the end of our, at the end of Condit, and it was dangerous for motorcycles especially.
Thank you.
And that was taken care of very quickly, thank you.
Great, yeah, a lot of people assume that it has been related to us, much like a power outage, everybody thinks their neighbor called too often. It does get called in, and our road department is pretty good at trying to get to it as quickly as possible, so...
Mrs. Isher, the last time you were, maybe the last time, the time you were here, when you were bringing up the issues on your road, I'd just like to let you know, I took a ride down there, so I wanted to see what it was like. And yet, it was justified calling the public.
Are you talking about the...
The spots you pointed out that were bad.
The spots that were bad on my road?
Well, I've got a lot of spots.
Or the traffic, the speeding?
I'm sorry?
No, the road, the condition of the roads now.
The condition, well, after you were running off and things, I said, look, I wanna take a ride down.
Well, also, in regards to the speeding, they put a box up, and a cop was sitting out there, and he was in the black detective car or whatever, and I went out for a jog, and I was speaking to him, and he was monitoring the traffic, and he said, as I was standing on the shoulder of my road, speaking to him, off on the very shoulder, a car coming, a truck coming down in the lane I was standing off to the side of, was doing 50 in a 30 mile an hour lane, while, while the detective's car was sitting there.
We listened to that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public who wish to be heard, please raise your hand.
Yeah, let me talk briefly about the Raritan Headworks, the RHA. They did their initial test in 12, they did another test in 13, and then they did another test in 14. Each year, they come up with a number that reflects the bug life, and they call it macro. Okay, so it is an indicator of what may be going on in the stream. Each year, it was based, the, the number was 18 each year. So, it hasn't gotten better, and it hasn't gotten worse, all right? According to Bill Kimber, they rate that moderately impacted, all right? He does state that he thinks it comes from Fenmore, that was his opinion. He could not tell us if it was from the old part, was from the new part. He couldn't tell us that it was due to the trees being cut down. He could not specifically say where that came from. He did make recommendations, and the biggest recommendation, well, I came out with two recommendations. The first one would be to get an additional test site further upstream, okay? And they were gonna try to do that this year. The second one would be to test, sorry?
Raritan was gonna do that? Okay, I'm sorry.
The second one would be to test the soil samples on both sides of the banks. And he explained it like this, and Harvey Klein backed it up. Harvey Klein, for anybody listening, is the guy with the water testing company, Carden State.
He's one of the pre-Unit water people in the state.
Yeah, basically, if it's in the water, it's gonna dissipate sooner or later. Where you're gonna find any issues is gonna be in the soil surrounding on the banks, all right? So, Bill Kimber recommended to the Environmental Commission, and one of the things they should be considering, okay, is taking soil samples.
To the Raritan's testing the water, but not soil?
Correct, they don't, they don't, Raritan only tests the water, they do not test the soil.
Can I point out that, I believe it was two years ago, and these are on our website as well, too, we did test the sediment, it was in the Ledgewood Basin part.
I don't mean to be rude, but that's not true, we did check.
Please.
Well, he gotta tell you right.
Good opportunity, I'm sorry, Mr. Raths, continue.
I'm sorry, not through this process, but earlier back, I believe it was 13 or 13, we tested the sediment in the pond as well. That's on our website as well. We did not do the stream bed sample.
All right, in further talking to Harvey, there are a number of things, the list being too great of things to look for as far as what could be possibly coming out of an old landfill. He suggested doing a battery test of the most common pollutants associated with the landfill, and working our way backwards, all right? I had a conversation with Mr. Raths and Mayor Riley the next day, and I gave that opinion to them, that we should be doing that, those testing, all right? So, that's basically what I came away with on that report. Members in the public, let me finish, Mr. Raths. Members in the public asked if he should, could speak to the council, that is not my decision. I found his report, his report to be informative. So, it's up to council if they wish to have this guy here and listen to his report. Okay, that's it for me, Mr. Raths.
Yes, and I think we were going to see if DEP was planning on these tests. Well, water tests, we know they're doing, how we're down the stream, I don't know. I don't know if they're gonna do the soil banks, or any soil testing, not onsite, on the stream itself.
I, I don't, they're doing groundwater, so I'm, they're gonna go into their, they're going into their wells that they have, so I don't, I will check with them about any sampling on the, of the streams themselves. I think that the last I heard is, is that it probably would behoove us to get the results of the DEP's groundwater testing before we determine what, what could be tested through the sediment.
And that's what Harvey recommended.
That's what Harvey Klein recommended.
Okay, so you get both results, that's right, I remember this, get the water samples, and then you, then...
Then that'll give us the battery of what we should be testing for.
So, we will be moving forward with that.
Great, anything else, Mr. Schmidt?
I'm good.
Thank you. Mr. De Filippo?
Just briefly, Mr. Mayor, I think as I discussed with members all week, we have two people who are, were proposing for trustee positions for the library. Janice Stigler from Ledgewood and Jeanette Carey on 42 St. Mary's Drive. So, that would complete the library board, and I wanna thank Councilman Schmidt for his help in putting that together.
Great, well, those are mayoral appointments, so at this point in time, Ms. Reed, I'll appoint Jeanette Carey and Janice Stigler to the library board trustees. So, you can contact them tomorrow, and I'm sure Bob can work out with you any information so they can get up to speed on the next meeting, et cetera. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. De Filippo?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Raths?
Yeah, two things, Mr. Mayor.
I don't know about Stigler.
Last night, I attended a Board of Education meeting, and a couple of things, they did introduce their new business administrator, and she'll be taking over from the interim business administrator, she was present last night at the meeting. There was a presentation by the VFW to three students at Lincoln Roosevelt, and three students at Eisenhower. This was based on papers they did about the VFW, the VFW members, and what it was to be American. And there was a third, second, third place in each category. So, it was a real nice ceremony, each one got up, and they got, and they got to read their paper. And parents were up at their full house last night, which is unusual. Also, the principal, excuse me, the principal of Eisenhower Room School put on a PowerPoint presentation on how he is changing the classroom structure, how he plans on teaching the various courses this year, and what he's looking for is to get as much time as he can with a student in a particular subject, as opposed to every 35 minutes moving up from point A to point B to point C, which apparently is not, is not effective as far as learning, they just don't have enough time. So, they're increasing some of these periods, and they're moving them around. That's all I had on Board of Education. Did last week, attend the meeting and dinner at the Morris County League of Municipalities. And a couple of things, our county clerk is gonna be taking on a road, this may have happened again, a veteran ID program, where you'd be able to go to various locations and get, get an ID card. She'd also propose as an example, at the Tony College of Morris, being able to get passport. Instead of having to go to Morristown, and have one or two nights a week if you work and go there, you'd be able to go to other locations in a county and get a passport. There was also, and I gave us all the councils, a small newsletter from the league, and... And one of the things they brought up is, getting a little summary on each of these is transportation funding. As you know, it's been cut down substantially, and the lobbying to get that back in increased. So, as an example, your road, Mrs. Isher, we could get some funds for it. They also brought up pension and health benefit studies, co, co housing, business personal property tax losses, and state diversion of industry tax receipts for property tax revenue. So, these are some of the things I've been up, it's a worthwhile meeting to go to, get to see what's being done at a county level and on a state level. And we are also updated regularly from these areas at times, but it's nice to have a presence there, and they do recognize that we attended. And that's all I have tonight, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, to come back, I should have mentioned, I wanna also bring to the attention of the council and the people in the audience, that Cephas Bowles passed away on Saturday. He's the, he's the husband of Linda Bowles, who's an assistant principal at Roxbury High School, but was also the CEO of WBGO, Public Radio Station in Newark. Very sad, and very sudden, and, and a tremendous loss, I think, for the community.
Thank you. Another thing, this Thursday night, there is another Economic Development Committee meeting, 7 o'clock, at the town hall.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Booker?
Just two things, not necessarily in regard to very exciting, but we need the last of the, yeah, but today, the governor gave his budget address, and municipal funding will be flat, so you'll receive the same amount as you did last year, you're not gonna lose any. And the education funding is going to increase slightly, so I think that's good news, cause the financial situation is a little tough. But right now, the plan is to try to keep everybody stable.
Ms. Reed? Mr. Raths?
I've got a few things, it's winter. Yeah, I will try to get to them as, as quickly as I can. First is salt. Well, first, I wanna acknowledge that we are well represented here by our DPW tonight, and I wanna thank you guys for coming out. As you guys probably know, they have been very busy this year, so I appreciate it, I'm sure the residents do as well, too, so thank you guys very much. And before you leave, just give them the addresses for the potholes, and they'll get right out. But in regards to salt, we, like a lot, a lot of other communities, got into an issue in regards to the delivery of salt. If you recall, last year, it was the availability of salt, this year is the delivery of salt. We ran a deficit, which we are now addressing with Morris County, and Paul, I wanna thank you for your, for your work on this. Paul Bell's here. Well, right now, we're getting 230 tons a day delivered to the, the county's facility in Wharton, and we're going to get that for the next five days, they're coming in, but I believe they're gonna carry over to the next week as well, too, for five more days, until we're made whole. We're 2,200 tons, and they're 2,200 tons in arrears in delivery. So, I wanna thank Paul for, you know, staying on top of that, Rick Blood is working.
We're open, we're open by Wednesday or Thursday of next week, that that'll be...
Be, be whole again?
Hopefully, yes.
Grateful.
I'm in contact with them every morning, make sure that they're sending what they're supposed to be sending us, and hopefully by next week, we'll be, we'll be...
And I pointed out to Mr. Raths, I copied counsel and Mr. Blood on Sunday, that, you know, if any additional phone calls from us, you know, may help, certainly reach out before we're up again.
We will most certainly do that. The other one is frozen pipes. The, like I had said earlier, we have ground, the ground is frozen up to four feet deep in a lot of areas. So, right now, we have about 20 residents who have either frozen pipes on our side of the service, or they're on the homeowner's side as well, too. So, they're going through, some of them as many as three or four days without water. We have offered some of them bottled water in circumstances. What we do is, we try to do the repairs ourselves, we will also bring in a welder to heat the lines up and move, and, and free, free up, in a safe manner, a supervised welder, and to unfreeze the lines. So, they've been really busy in the water department as well, too. Today, I understood today that we didn't get any new frozen lines, so that might, that might be a good thing. If you're concerned about it, you may want to just leave your faucets running, but it's not a general recommendation. Winter parking enforcement. First of all, I wanna thank the police department for really enforcing our, our parking bans. However, prior to enforcing the parking bans, we sent out a, we had Facebook postings, we had a, we posted on our website, and we sent out, I believe it was two alerts to the residents, asking them to move their cars off the streets. Well, you will be, as you probably have, or you may be, may have in the very near future, you will get calls from residents who did not pull their vehicles off the streets and got tickets. If that's the case, then I forwarded an email from the police chief today to mayor and council. Then, once the ticket is issued, they can come to court, and they can appeal to the judge. That's what we have a judge for. So, we're treating everybody uniformly. I understand from Rick and Paul that this was probably some of the best, you know, because of the enforcement, that we had some of the most, you know, the better and most safe and effective plowing that we've had in a long time.
It's getting better, you know, it's still there, but it's much better than what it's been in your past, your past.
So, those are the, those are the things I have on, on that. Also, just a quick update on the Ledgewood Mall. I spoke to the owner of the Ledgewood, the owner's representative of Ledgewood Mall today.
The owner, just the actual owner?
This is the actual owner, yeah, this is the new owner. They have cleared their first court hurdle, as you know, the previous owner took them to court, but I understand now that their, the previous owner is appealing that decision now as well, too. So, they're more hopeful in regards to closing on that with their potential buyer very soon. So they're more hopeful in regards to closing on that with their potential buyer very soon. And then one last thing is I got a call from our freehold director right before the meeting. The VFW parking lot, that project will be reimbursed from the county. That was a CBDG grant that we received. The county will be reimbursing us from that. The 2014 grant though is not going to be approved, but there are going to come back with some hints or some instructions on possibly going forward on the 2015 lot. So they're paying for the, they're paying for the drive, the parking area, but they're, we're not going to get the 2014 grant.
Can I speak? Is that official now?
That's official.
Oh, yeah.
That's as of 6:30 tonight.
All right. As far as the other grants, if they still require the information they were seeking, we cannot give them that, so.
I don't know. Bob will have to follow up on that. This is what I got for tonight, sir.
Can I speak on that?
Please.
Those grants are gone, Bob.
They're gone.
Yeah, they, they had an issue at their end and those grants are no longer eligible to places like the VFW and American Legions and places like that. But there are other programs that we're waiting to find out what they are. We'll get them to you.
I'm disappointed. I thought, I thought we were pretty sure to get that.
They're going to suggest what it would take for VFWs to be, to be eligible.
So we'll proceed with those.
Thank you, Donald. I'll report it back to the VFW.
Mr. S?
That's it, that's it.
The only thing I had beside what's already been covered is just reminders, I think we still need some Lake Muskegon et cetera.
We need to.
Yeah.
I'll work on it.
They've asked again, the volunteers from Roxbury over there.
All right, that brings us to matters requested, referred by council members, manager, attorney or clerk, application for special permit, Temple Shalom Brotherhood.
Can I move that, please?
You may. You did. Motion is seconded in discussion. Non-roll call, please.
Mr. Barron.
Yes.
Mr. De Filippo.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mayor Riley.
Yes. Brings us to introduction of proposed ordinances. We have none. A hearing and adoption of ordinances on second reading, O-1-15, calendar year 2015 ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank. Can I get a motion to open to the public?
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chris, real quick, explain this for the public.
Okay, every year the state requires us to pass this ordinance should we ever want to go over our cap, which is our levy cap. Just to let you know, the Roxbury Township is $2 million under our levy cap, so it's not an issue within the municipality. That said, if we were to have an emergent issue that we had to address, this would allow us to do it.
Thank you. Would anybody in the public wish to be heard on ordinance O-1-15 only? Yes, sir.
Just a question. Have we ever had to exceed that cap in the past?
Never.
Even Sandy or Irene? All right. Nice job, Mr. S.
Well, we try.
No, we never have and then after two years that, what's been done is.
Okay.
Into our general fund. Anybody else in the public wish to be heard on this? Seeing none, roll call, please.
I'll talk, we need a motion to close.
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion, sir.
We have a motion is seconded and further discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Barron.
Yes.
Mr. De Filippo.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mayor Riley.
Yes. Ordinance O-2-15, capital ordinance to authorize the making of various public improvements and the acquisition of new additional or replacement equipment and machinery, new information technology equipment and new automotive vehicles and a new ambulance, including original apparatus and equipment in, by, and for the township of Roxbury, in the accounting of County of Morris, State of New Jersey, and to appropriate the sum of $2,2,947 from a contribution from the Roxbury Public Library, a state grant, capital surplus, and the capital improvement fund to pay the cost thereof. Move to open to the public?
Sir.
Motion is seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
This is our capital ordinance that we have to pass every year. Actually, we have to go through this process, but we're pay as you go, we cash. So we're in a pretty good position the last couple of years and we hope to, hope to be able to increase our road projects because of it.
This increases our commitment to the roads by approximately 20% this year.
Yes.
Keep working on them.
Would anybody in the public wish to be heard on O-2-15? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, motion to close, please.
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adopt?
I'll make a motion to adopt. Sir.
Motion is seconded and further discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Barron.
Yes.
Mr. De Filippo.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mayor Riley.
Yes. Next item up is introduction and adoption of resolutions.
Are we calling any, Mr. Mayor?
Well, I'm going to bring one up, but you can put it into the.
All right, so I move 2015-67, include 63, 64, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75, 2015-076, 077, 078, and that's it.
Get a second, please. We have a motion is seconded, any discussion? Seeing no hands. Mr. Booker, for Zelli and Emelcott, why are these amounts so high at this stage of the game instead of just doing it more frequently? So there's a difference.
Well, I think it was just the administration's position to do a contract for the entire year and we'll go from there. You know, I can tell you that in terms of Bruce Rose, he continues to do a lot of work in terms of the air monitoring and Bob Zelli is, you know, hooking at various information that we get from the NJPT on a daily basis. So, and preparing a report, you know, at the township's request, so.
I'm not saying we walk away from them. I'm just saying, why are we doing the whole year at this point? So we can have some accountability.
Now, that was, that was, that was, that was the administrative's position, which is as we've done in the past, is we do it for the year. Now, it's council's leisure if you want to move it, if you want to.
You want to cut the number in half and make it.
Cut it down. So you want to cut the number in half, we can do that.
I would if council doesn't mind.
I don't mind at all.
Okay. So 2015-063, which is page 10, would be amended to read $90,000. And 2015-064, which is page 13, would read $180,000. The 180 is for Emelcott and 90 is for Mr. Zelli. Any other comments on any of the other resolutions? I will be abstaining on 2015-069.
Will that pass then?
Yeah, it's a simple majority.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Barron.
Yes.
Mr. De Filippo.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mayor Riley.
Yes, I accept for the one we're using. That takes us to personnel changes, which are none. Takes us to our communication package of February 20th. We do have something. Please, everybody save number three for your next budget meeting.
Can I ask a question about the nutritional site?
Yes.
That's been like this for a few meetings. Have we gotten prices on those repairs yet?
No, we don't have prices on the repairs. We have to get somebody out to the roof once it falls so they can come back and do repairs.
What is the scope of that? Is it the roof is bad or?
Well, the entire roof is going to need to be replaced shortly, but for right now we're looking at just getting the repairs done. Mr. Blood is going to, once he gets that, he'll prepare both of them and we'll figure out where we go.
Is there damage ongoing?
He, I've been told there's not.
I see a draft resolution for the Lake, Lake Macan escaping committee?
My information, I think.
Yes. What's your intent here?
Well, this is similar to what we were talking about, or what we did with the Main Street. And as you're aware, I think Main Street was very successful in not only getting, raising funds with grants, they raised over $350,000 for the improvements, but also they put together a vision, which came to council, council accepted. They then used, they then took that vision to the planning department and the planning department brought it to the planning board and the planning board accepted that as the design elements for the improvements in that area. We have a lot of interested parties in what's going on in the landing area and I think this gives us an opportunity to bring focus with all of those parties with the input in the direction of mayor and council as to how that proceeds in our, in our community.
I agree, except for one aspect. I think there's a redevelopment aspect that's not on Main Street that could have larger ramifications, residential or other type things. So I don't know if I would send that aspect off to.
I would not. I think the scope is fairly narrow and I think the scope is fairly narrow in its description. If you have any comments about the scope itself and narrowing it, because that would not be my intent. It would be just the design, the attributes and the treatment of the, say, gateway would have nothing to do with any redevelopment in the area. That's a planning board authority.
Is it the council's, is it the council's position to put this on this resolution for the next meeting? Because if there is, I've got to do some work on it.
Yeah, well, I think it's, I think we probably hold another meeting, so there's three council members that aren't here. Give them a chance to see it. They just started over the weekend and I would like to look at the scope then, if that's the, you know, if you have a better understanding of the intent.
Yeah, that was never, the intent was to get into, the intent was not to get into redevelopment. Similarly, the, similar to Main Street is to deal with the design and the appearance of the area.
Yeah, because I know the actual physical road design, working with the county, we talked about that at the planning board as well.
And that comes back to council as well too. So you have a lot of parties involved.
So we'll hold this, Tony. I have a feeling we'll move down in some direction if you wanted to start working on it, but I don't think it's necessary right away. I don't think there's a rush on this, right, Chris? No, yeah. In light of that, number three of the communication package is the, I'm sorry, four, is the county's working on their circulation element, which we also just spoke about at the planning board meeting, at our master plan meeting last week. And I think, and Russell did brought up, adopted on this, I couldn't tell by the memo.
Number three?
Four.
Four is correspondence.
No, four is circulation element from Morris County planning, Morris County planning board. I'm sorry, five.
Five.
Let me take my glasses off.
Yeah, I, I, what is your question, Mr. Mayor?
Just was this copper to Russell, first of all. Second of all, we're working on our plan element and we might be able to dovetail with our crisscross of county roads.
If.
Have an impact on, you know, this is where we addressed certain roads like Hillside and things like that years ago. So I think if there's anything that needs to be readdressed at the county level and dovetail it in with what we're doing to, you know, we can't send trucks down the road to nowhere, et cetera. So there's landing element aspects that I think are important to take a look at.
I'll get it over, boss.
Thank you. Anything else on communications?
I have a laundry list, but Mr. Raths and Lisa, we have to answer all their questions.
Yeah, I wasn't going to go through that. That's why I say let's hold that for the budget meeting.
No, I'm fine.
Thank you. All right. Complete communications. I will now take this to the public portion. And anybody in the public?
Bob Mederos, 401 Drive, Leavenworth, Jersey. I just want to elaborate a little on the Rockton Headwaters testing, which I went for a test program. I qualified and I was part of the testing group. First, by moderately impaired statement, it's, it's, it's quite all right if it was downstream somewhere, but to score 18 at the headwaters where it's starting to come, that's horrendous. It should have been 30. And downstream somewhere, 18 would have been moderately impaired. So I wanted to clear that up. Second, the way we test, we test for life in the water, in the soil. So we look for microbes. They're none. Something's killing them. The water is killing the microbes. That's why it's 18. They can only find a particular type of microbes in there. Third, the soil testing, the soil testing needs to be done further up the stream. And there is one way to prove that the water and the soil and the life is being killed by the landfill. There's a, there's two streams coming across, actually a third, but nobody believes the third. The one on top of the hill is higher than the landfill. And I suggested to the Rockton headquarters to test the water above the landfill. If that measures 30, then we know for sure that what's killing the life is at the bottom of the stream, which is coming from the landfill. I just wanted to clear that up, but the scientists will prove, prove it better.
Go back to.
I just have a question.
Sure.
What is the range in the number? You said 30, so I'm assuming 30 is the highest, that's the best?
30 is one of the highest. I believe it goes up to 35.
I think it's 32 or 36, something like that.
35.
It's 30.
The lowest is 0.
30 is the highest.
30 is the highest?
30 is the highest.
I think it's 36.
No, it's not 36.
I've been on the environmental commission for three years. It's 30.
I just. Thank you for asking.
If you got a 30, you're doing good. If you got an 18, you've got no life. It's dead.
No, 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 no.
It's, the portion of life that we seek to obtain 30 is dead. The portion of life that's there.
I'm not going to get into this, but zero is dead.
The what?
Zero is dead.
Zero is dead.
18 is moderately impaired and that's all of us.
Not at the head, the top of the water stream, the top of the water stream. I can see 18 down here, but not up here. The life that is supposed to sustain is dead.
Mr. Kimber didn't say that.
That's why I haven't come. He's the scientist. I'm only a student. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Anybody else that Bob pushed here? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Brenda Isherwood, Uniberg Sakastana. I'll just follow up from that. Let's just have the Raritan Headwaters Association here and we can clear this all up. We can hear it from the worst of his mouth, the expert in that. But it is unprecedented to have headwaters impaired, to have headwaters being 18. So what Bob is saying is yes, test above the landfill and test below it and that's just pure, any simpleton can figure that out. So maybe we could be simple and simply do it. And the macro invertebrates show the health of a stream. My husband is a fly fisherman and tying his own flies and knows all about what flies the fish eat at what times in the season. If you don't have bugs, you don't have life for a reason. Also by cutting down the trees, you worm the water and then you don't have your natural trout reproduction also. So then moving on to the resolutions of 2015-063 and 064. Mayor Riley, you're saying that 90,000 for Zelli and 180,000 for Emelcott. That is the reduction for six months each?
No, what, what the proposal was that was presented for this evening was, there with me one second so I can get the amounts. I believe it was 100 for Zelli?
I wrote it down. You said 90, but okay.
Okay. What I, that was for the year.
That was for the year, not for the reduced six months.
Correct.
So no.
Also, we didn't cut this, the only part, the only amendment to the contract wasn't, was that instead of the whole year, I cut it in half and said six months so we could have some accountability.
Six months for what?
We're going to look at it again.
For the contract.
Emelcott, yes.
But the price that you gave is for the 12 months.
No, the, the original price that was in here was for 12 months. Is that cut in half for six months?
So what's the six month price?
Exactly half, hold on.
It's 180 to 190. It's 180, it's 90.
Okay, so he said for $90,000 for Zelli, $180,000 for Amicot. I wrote it down as he said it, but if that's incorrect, please restate it.
For, for a one-year contract for Mr. Zelli, it was originally 180,000 for one year.
Okay.
It's gonna be a six-month contract at 90,000.
Right, so then what's the 180 for Amicot?
Amicot was originally a one-year contract at 360,000.
Okay, so then it's correct, 90,000 for six months and 180,000 for six months. Okay, then that's clear now, thank you.
Can I be, uh, expert?
And, um, one last thing.
I'll join you.
One last thing, Mr. Barons. I think there's been some confusion about my comment about Univerk when the budget meeting was here, and I got up and spoke when I heard that there was special funds separate from the townwide funds. I do not, in any form, manner, or wish, want Univerk paved. The last time our section of Univerk was paved, about 10 or 15 years ago, it became a drag strip, worse than it is now. I like my road bumpy. I like it a mess. Because as it is, you can see, as it is, you can see with the policeman sitting right there in an unmarked car and a pedestrian standing on the side of the road, a pickup truck comes down doing 20 miles an hour over the speed limit. And that didn't even seem that fast to me, and that's really the sad part.
My point was just to let you know that we do listen, that was it.
I don't want it paved. My concern was that it was going to be paved, and we do not, nor does my husband want it paved, because my husband has it, gets up at 4:00 in the morning to go to work, and he has a big issue about cars racing down the street in the 10:00 to 2:00 in the morning with loud music and loud mufflers. So, in no way, shape, or form do we want Univerk paved. That's my request. We want the speeding taken care of. And, and in fact, in fact, the police officer also told me that there had been a DWI on my road, and the guy was doing 65.
Once you're drinking, you know something what they're doing. Uh, but, but the police have done the survey.
And they have not gotten back to me.
And as of this Monday, the chief said he would have somebody be, is trying to get...
Well, he tried, he left me a message. I called him back. He's not gotten back to me. Yes, I'm waiting to hear what he has to say.
He's tried to get back to you, but he hasn't been able to reach it.
Okay. I don't have a missed call, but okay. Thanks.
Anybody else in?
That's Bob Schultz again. What to test for in the soil, you can go back to the old DEP reports and what was in the old landfill if you're looking for something to go test. There was 1,560 barrels or however many, 55-gallon drums buried in that landfill. That's a proven fact. That's documented by the NJDEP. That stuff's in there, so you can certainly go and, and go ahead and test for those different chemicals. There's stuff from Revlon there, there's stuff from various other places. And I would also suggest that you test for what the DEP is testing for at Comfield North, because I would suspect that the same stuff that was dumped there was dumped at Fenimore at that same time, because Comfield South and Comfield North had the same stuff in it. And that was just years apart that they actually found it. As for the Rhyton Headwaters Association, that's scored from zero to 30, 30 being the highest. And you would expect a 28 or higher in this region, which is the headwaters of the Rhyton River. Scoring an 18 moderately impaired, certainly the stream is not dead, but it's certainly not where it should be. And the direct cause is, is the Fenimore landfill. From what Bill Kibler is saying, he's been saying this for three years now.
Old endu.
Excuse me?
Old endu.
I can't tell you what it is or what it isn't. I can tell you that from what they say, you know, the cause is the Fenimore landfill and what's going on there. And I brought that up to the Environmental Commission over the two years before I was let go from the Environmental Commission, and nothing was ever done. And something needs to be done. The water needs to be checked coming out of there, including the soil. So, it gives you some clues on where you can go with it ahead and test. Um, why aren't the Environmental Commission meeting minutes online anymore? And, or the gates of the meetings?
We can look at, I was unaware of it, so all I...
That hasn't happened?
I don't know if there's meetings, uh, meeting minutes that take place, or did they...
Yeah, we haven't, and we've been having a problem with getting them online.
Well, that, that would... That would be now 14 months, which is exactly the time I was let go from the Environmental Commission. Because that stuff was all online. Before that, the website was taken down, the meeting minutes were removed, the meeting times were removed, the email address to the Environmental Commission was removed, and nothing is online to get in touch with anybody.
We'll, we'll check on it, but it, it's a commission, so we'll go through our administration anyway for contact, but...
Yeah, I believe all the contact information is, is on the...
It's 2014, it might be, I'm a, that's not a problem.
Bob, you know, when you set that page up, you set it up under your personal domain. All right, we had a...
I wasn't gonna break that up, go ahead.
It wasn't my personal domain. It was one that was, that the commission approved of, and I was very...
You were the sole gatekeeper, let me talk, please. You were the sole gatekeeper for that thing.
Correct.
What they, the talks between council members and the manager is that we wanted to change everything over to another domain holder.
Right.
Okay, that was done. I think everything is on that site. The minute, the meeting minutes, I thought were being posted, but we have to look at it. We'll just, as simple as that, we'll take care of it.
The EC's website is still on the township's website now. That's where, if you click on the EC's website, like the link from your page, the township's webpage...
I had to get to it. Okay.
And that's it. And rossberryec.org should've been transferred over to you guys, and that was a year and a half ago.
Well, there's apparently a link on our site, so we'll look into it. Thanks, Bob. Anybody else in the public wish to be heard on any issues? Please raise your hand. Yes, sir.
Carl, and I guess everybody knows who I am. I'd like to go back and ask the council to have a resolution, to have the, the...
Bill Kibler.
Bill Kibler come and speak to you guys and speak to the DEP if you can get them here, too. Because, sorry, I don't mean to be rude or disrespectful, but you're making too much light of what the findings are there. Bill Kibler, you neglected to tell them, and I'm surprised at you, Mr. Mayor. You got the same information at the, at the Highlands Commission. But 1.5 million people are drinking polluted water coming from there. So, there's more to it than just saying moderate. And he, he sat right there, and he said, "moderate." Don't make light of that. Just because it says moderate, it's not moderate. It's a problem. And he said it about five times, and you stood right, sat right there and listened to him. So, and I'm really surprised that you didn't give this council, 'cause that happened, what, two weeks ago? More information on it. And I'm surprised at you, Mr. Mayor, you got the stuff from the Highlands Council.
First of all, it was a presentation to the Highlands Council at a public meeting, and I didn't have any data in advance, so...
I'm not saying in advance. When he came, you were in the room, but you got the slides. I'm sure you did. If you didn't, then, then there's something wrong. So, I'd like the council to make a resolution to have that happen.
And just for, for your knowledge, even though he's not saying anything, I spoke to Mr. Schmidt, and he was concerned based upon the information that he collected from that meeting. So, where it goes from there still has to be looked at. I don't have all the details. He was talking to...
That's why I'm asking you.
Can I, can I finish, please?
Yeah.
I don't have all the details yet. Did you wanna say something, Mr. Schmidt?
Yeah, uh, my report tonight was just the facts. I didn't narrate it like Mr. Kimber did. While I have a personal opinion, what I gave the council tonight was, what I took out of that meeting is a fact.
And you know what? I'm sorry, sir, but you didn't have all the facts.
Uh, quite frankly.
I, I, I was with Bob, but...
That's a talking, please.
Oh, don't give me talking. I was with Bob, and we did that test. Don't insult me, Mr. Mayor. Go ahead, I'll be quiet. Go ahead, you can answer.
We don't, we don't need you. We're fine. Do you have any other questions?
Yeah, not to have that resolution.
Any other questions?
Yeah, how about the questions about what, what we're doing with the stack and new stack? I, you know what? I'll put it in a form and email, and I'll send it to you.
Thanks, appreciate it.
And this lady over here asked about why we can't take this to the next level, which is the federal.
We, we have.
Wait, 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 please answer my question. Why can't we? We have is not answering my question.
I, 'cause there is no answer to your question. You're never happy with the answer.
Why haven't we taken it to the higher level?
We have. We have approached the EPA on multiple occasions.
Like the lady said, federal level.
The EPA is the federal level.
Okay. You can't go higher than that? The EPA won't come, because the DPA, the EPA won't ask them. The DEP, I mean. The DEP says, "No, I don't want you." Don't get mad, Mr. Mayor. Tell me the answer.
No.
You can't or you don't want?
Anything else?
You didn't answer my question, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I had that question on the table. I had that question on the table. Please answer.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Penet.
I wish you would've answered my question.
You didn't get it? I have.
You didn't? Tell me when you did it and...
You didn't accept my answer.
Tell me when you did it and who you talked to.
It's been posted online. Where have you been?
You know, that's rude.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public wish to be heard on any issue? Please raise your hand. Yes, sir. Actually, we normally don't have people up second time. Go ahead, Bob, quickly.
I'm Maderos. By dead, I mean I took out less macros out of that water. You're supposed to collect 100 within an hour. I was there four hours, we couldn't get 20, and they were dead.
Nobody started with it.
I'm only, I'm only specifying that the water is dead.
That's why I was trying to, that's why I was trying to clarify with the, with the last person up here, is Mr. Schmidt actually shared those very concerns, with me at least, and, and we will with the, with everybody.
The bottom line, there is a serious problem, gentlemen, and we need it addressed.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Mary Numery, Knast Street, Ledwood. Would you be willing to ask this Department of Justice to come in?
For?
To investigate this whole mess? The DEP isn't helping us. You guys obviously can't help us. Who can help us?
Any other questions or comments?
I'd like to know who can help us, because we're sick.
And that's the concern, and that's what we're trying to address. The Department of Justice, last time I know, has no bearing on the health and welfare of the Rossboro citizens. So, while I agree that it might be important to find out who or why, if something took place or underhanded or anything like that outside of a developer that went beyond his scope of work...
Okay, but I'm asking you...
That doesn't help us correct what is out there right now, which we had no input into, we're working with and litigation with the person that did bring it to us.
I'm asking you though...
Ongoing at a great expense to this township, not this council, this township, and everybody that lives here, including you and me.
I know it's been at a great expense to all of us, but I'm asking you if, who can help us? Who do we go to?
We continue right for now. Just contact DEP with any specific questions. Let us know. We do, we do follow up on those, and we also post answers when we get them on our website to keep everybody informed to the best of our ability. We've been very transparent during this. Many questions that have come up in the last month, we're finding have been on the website, in many cases, up to a year. So, while it's ongoing, we don't expect everybody to remember everything. Just shows you that a lot of these things are being addressed, and we're trying. It's not perfect. We're not saying this is a, a, a wonderful thing by any stretch of imagination. It's horrible.
I mean, none of us have asked for this.
We'll continue to address it. And you're right, none of us.
None of us have asked for this?
None of us, everybody in this room included.
And we just want answers. We wanna know when we can start feeling better, when we can go outside again.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to comment in regards to, in regards to specific health issues. I would encourage you again to try and reach out, and it's on our website, to try and reach out to Robert Wood Johnson. I mean, you, you, you do that. I, I don't understand. I mean, they're the preeminent experts in this field, but people have never availed themselves, although they feel ill. I, I know Carl, except for, I know that you have.
Thank you.
Carl, Carl Stamakis. But other people have not availed themselves to this.
I have gotten doctor's notes from my own doctor saying that the dump has caused my asthma to be worse because of this frigging dump.
Once again, if you have those doctor notes, if you haven't provided them...
I have provided them to you guys.
To the Department, our Health Department, we forwarded them down to them, we'll follow up with them. That's what we've always asked.
We can, we don't have any ability to, to affect in a, uh, in a manner that a physician would have to, to help that. We can try to, we're trying to make, to eliminate what is causing it. That's our prime goal and concern.
Yeah, but it's, it's like whenever you get lies from the DEP, you get cover-ups every time you turn around. And I'm not saying it's your guys' fault, but you get cover-ups whenever you turn around.
Is... Have you reached out to Robert Wood Johnson?
No.
Can I have them reach out to you directly?
I honestly don't know if I would do that right about now.
Okay. When you, when you, when you can get back to us on that, I would really love for them to talk to you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in public wish to be heard?
I, I'd just like to follow up from what she said.
Any, anybody, any, any other members of the public wish to be heard? Please raise your hand. Seeing none?
I'd just like to follow up what she said. Uh, Mr. Rath, you know this, because you've got Kathy to talk to the person in the Health Department, and names I can't disclose, just like you guys can't. Information that another person went to another doctor that didn't even know what was going on, and there was a letter in there from somebody here that says, "We're not allowed to talk about that." So, there's other stuff going on, and I just wanna let you know that we know.
I know nothing about it. Thank you. Uh, we close the public portion. Do we have an executive session?
Not for me, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, we're gonna bring up the one, but I think we're the usual, but I think we're okay. Did I get a motion to adjourn?
We have a motion, we do.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Take care. How you been doing?
Good, good, good.
What's he, what's he working on now? His eagle?
Yes.
Oh, I, has he got his project yet?
No, that's next. He's just tuning it eventually. Congratulations. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, how old is he?
I'm thinking we need to be 15.
15, man.
15, wow.
We make it here.